I'll call this April 18, 2023, regular meeting of the Lee County Motor Supervisors. First thing on the agenda, we got a couple of public hearings. Mr. Cobb, these are in your district. Would you care to read?
Lee County Motor Supervisors will hold a public hearing.
On Tuesday, April 18, 2023, at 5:30 PM in the general district courtroom of the Lee County Courthouse located in Jonesville, Virginia, to solicit input on special use permit request. Daniel Nepp has applied for a special use permit to allow place set manufacturing in an A1 agricultural district. Property consists of approximately 26.765 acres and is located on Flatwoods Road, Route 661, approximately .4 miles east of Wilson Hill Road, Route 855 in the Flatwoods community, tax parcel number 67-7-2.
Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of that?
Rick Johnson, zoning administrator for the county, planning director as well. This application is made pursuant to a zoning text amendment approved by this body December 20th, 2022 that expanded allowed uses in the A1 district beyond many storage buildings to include manufactured cabinets, place sets, outdoor furniture, and similar uses. Mr. Nepp had a public hearing with the planning commission last month. To that, there was some public comment by Judge Baker noting traffic and noise impacts in the area as well as a change in use in agricultural districts. Ultimately, the planning commission voted three to one to recommend approval for Mr. Nepp's proposal. I think at this time, we'll let Mr. Nepp speak.
Is there anyone else who wants to speak?
Yeah, so I'm Mr. Nepp. I'm the one that applied for that. I got to meet a couple of these guys the other day. They come out and we talked a little bit. So it's like he said, I just wanted to build some swing sets there on my property. Home business, I wanted to be there at home with my family mostly. It was last meeting you come up about preferably that would be out on the four lane, you know, for whatever business reasons and stuff, but I would prefer to have it. Being Amish, we don't have vehicles, so we, for me to hire a driver, take me to work, bring me home, so it would be creating actually almost more traffic by that way than what the traffic is going to be coming into my business location. It's not a public, they don't, public don't come there to buy. It's just we build them there, deliver them to the customer, and set them up for the customers. It's not a public gathering place or anything like that.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the special use permit request by Daniel Nepp. Do I hear a motion?
I want to approve it.
Have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any other discussion? If not, all votes of favor signify the saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'll abstain due to having represented Mr. Nepp recently.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, no. And the next one's in your district too.
You want me to read?
Yeah.
The Lee County Motor Supervisors will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, April 18, 2023, at 5:30 PM in the general district courtroom of the Lee County Courthouse located in Jonesville, Virginia, to solicit input on special use permit request. Benjamin Yoder has applied for a special use permit to allow furniture manufacturing in an A1 agricultural district. The property consists of approximately 12.92 acres and is located on Tobacco Road, Route 662, approximately .9 miles east of Planted Bridge Road, Route 758, in the Flatwoods community, tax parcel number 68A, parentheses, 1, in parentheses, dash 2, comma, 3A.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb.
I'll speak once again. This is, this public hearing was actually held before the planning commission at the same time as the other one, under the same parameters of that approved zoning text amendment. This was, once again, Mr. Baker noted potential traffic impacts, noise impacts, encroachment upon agricultural district, and potential impacts to school traffic. On this instance, the planning commission voted four to zero recommending approval. And the differentiation in this one and the one that you previously took up is that this one will actually, the structure will also be Mr. Yoder's dwelling space. He could actually permit this by rights if his shop space would be under 25% of the footprint of the entire structure, but he's looking at roughly 50% of the structure, so it would fall beyond bounds of that home occupation.
Thank you. Anybody want to speak on behalf of that?
You know, what I'm looking to do is similar to what he said, similar to Daniel Nepp, looking to have a home business there, so I don't need to travel so much. It would be, as he also mentioned, the reason I need this permit is for structural purposes for the, as far as the building codes, as he mentions 50%, so I need a special use permit to do it in the same building. So that's the primary reason I'm getting this permit, because I would fit very well into the home business rating if I would do two buildings. But I want to keep it at one building, so this is what I have to do. Also, as far as traffic, I can see that will increase the traffic. It's not going to be a retail space or not aimed to that. I could get some retail customers, but I think somebody trying to run a retail shop on tobacco really is going to be a little bit simple. So I'm aiming to have dealers outside of my immediate area. I would haul them out, my furniture out to other dealers. As far as traffic, I don't see that it would increase much. And as far as noise, the time that I would have like a planter running, it would be maybe like a lawnmower, that's only going to be parts of the area, and it's going to be inside an insulated building. So that's about all I have, and I guess we'll see what happens.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name's Tom Baker. I own about 200 acres on the back road. For this meeting, I am just Tom Baker, a farmer. This gentleman referred to me as a judge. He just wanted to tell the board that I'm not a judge for this meeting, so please don't take that in the minutes as a judge. People have been living on the back road a long time, and it's a very small road. Ms. Muncie, I call her as a witness, she drives that road quite frequently to take her kids to school. It's a small road. It is not the kind of road that you need a furniture facility or anything of that nature on it. I'm asking to not give a special use permit because of the size of the road. If you all are familiar with the back road, you come around a cliffside on one side that's very, very small, and you can barely pass. You have to pull over. There's going to be school buses, cars, everything of that nature going down that road. And then on the other side, there's a small one-lane bridge. It's just not feasible to allow manufacturing to be any kind on that road. Plus, the size of the acreage, it's 12.92 acres, under, I think, the code section, or almost code section, it's 10 or 11, for a special use permit can't be allowed if noise can be outside of that 12.92 acres. So if a person is working in furniture, they're going to have planners, like you just mentioned, there's going to be planners, there's going to be dust collectors and things of that nature. There are homes within close proximity to the 12.92 acres, plus the nature preserve is right there. So I'm asking that the board supervisor not allow the permit. There's a difference between that and the first one. I didn't speak up on the last, the last hearing about the first one, other than the fact that the amount of traffic that's going on down through there, it's not safe. And if you all have been down that road, you'll understand it's not a safe road for any type of business other than what it's zoned for and what's been zoned for for all these years. And when the party bought this 12.92 acres, they knew that they were buying agriculture, A1 piece of land. If they wanted to zone it for business, they could purchase a parcel that was zoned for business anywhere on the four lane or anyplace in the county that could be zoned for business use. That's my thought on the property. I ask the board not to allow the permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything to say? Thank you.
My name's Charles Langley. I live right beside where he's fixing the build. Far as the traffic goes, anytime we have any problem, school buses. Sorry, ma'am, but most of the women drive through there pretty quick. Didn't mean it lured you. But anyhow, other than that, I don't see no problem with the road. The one-lane bridge was taken out. That's a two-lane bridge. He needs to go measure it if he needs to check it. There's been big trucks coming through there. No more on what he's going to do. He'll be something loaded out, gone, over with. And like I said, he's going beside me, so I ain't got no problem with it. The rest of the people ain't got no problem. So I don't know what's up with Baker, but I don't see why I need anybody in. And I've talked to all the neighbors. They ain't got no problems with it. Matter of fact, they're trying to figure out why Baker's kicking on it. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
I'd like to rebut that. I don't think he's spoken with the Wits on that. And I don't know who you are, so if he contacted me, I told you what I had to feel about it.
You don't mind what I want Wits to say.
That's what Wits told me.
Anyone else? If not, I'll...
Mr. Chairman, could I ask Mr. Yoder something?
Yes.
Could you come back after the police stuff? The traffic we're talking about for your materials, they'll be coming around tractor-trails or trucks or some of them?
The materials, most of the lumber, the wood, I'm going to go collect myself, would just be a pickup and a trailer. Like varnish, I would have some skid for it coming in every now and then on a tractor-trailer. That would be, from what I see now, that would be once a month for that category. It's not, it's not going to be every day, by second or not. So yeah, that's...
Well, is the road wide enough then for a tractor-trail?
Yeah, it is.
Because I don't know that, I don't know that area. I mean, I don't know what you're talking about, really.
Yeah, we get, talking tractor-trails, my dad has a, he's got a special use permit. He manufactures freight sheds, and we're all the way back in by the East Grove Church. We get, we get four semi-hogges of lumber back in there. Those roads are smaller than the back road, so that, that's not going to be an issue. I just got a load of gravel in today on a dump truck. The road isn't an issue, and it's just starting to kick about.
Is that, is that a gravel road or asphalt road?
If that is.
Asphalt.
Yeah, and you mentioned on what Chuck says, Chuck isn't here, but I gather he was, Baker was there. Baker can tell you what Chuck told him.
I have no questions, Mr. Chairman. What else? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Let me, let me ask one question. I missed that last statement you made about somebody being there. I didn't get exactly what you heard.
The last statement I made was, Mr. Baker can tell you what Chuck thinks about, about me being there. I gather Mr. Baker was to Chuck with...
Who's Chuck?
Chuck, that's my neighbor on the other side. Chuck, what's his, Charles, wait, I don't know.
I just wanted to verify that.
Okay.
Anyone else? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve. Do I hear a motion? I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Yeah, I'll say it.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If none, all favor signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll abstain for the same reason.
I think that being noted. Thank you. Next on the agenda is departmental reports, building inspector, extension office, and the work program. Trust you all have read these. You got another one from the work program here. Any comments on those? If not, county administrator reports that favorable warrants have been issued. I think I missed something here.
You did.
Yeah, public expression, I'm sorry. Now, I skipped over that. Skip it too, as a matter of fact. All over the board for public expression. Say your name and where you live, your address, and limit it to three minutes.
My name's Terry Cox, 895 Kane Gap Road, Dunfield, Virginia, Stickleyville. And Chairman Mosel and supervisors, thank you for allowing me to speak for a few minutes here. I was wanting to bring some, hopefully some helpful information. May 15th is the VDOT Spring Meeting for the Smart Scale Program, and I was wanting to ask if the supervisors or the county administrator could attend that, and I'm here specifically for extending the passing lanes on Powell Mountain, the eastbound lane. But I won't be redundant, but heavy traffic across that going to their work, eastbound to Dunfield, to the Tri-Cities, the advanced healthcare, and our social activities, and it scores really high, only Interstate 81, and the Weber City Corridor scores higher than this in far southwest Virginia. And we could do a great, great thing for our county, open it up back in those, that direction where the wealthy counties are. And I was in Danville, South Boston area. I take 58 to Chapel Hill, North Carolina, to visit relatives, and I crossed Lover's League and the Patrick County, Carroll County line, the highest point on the 58 project, and they're moving 10 million cubic yards of earth in three years. There's a picture of it, I'm going to give it to you, and if they can do that, we can get those 2,000 lanes, 2,000-foot lane down that Powell Mountain, help our county residents. And Mr. Jesse, I would like to encourage you to come to that meeting on May 15th and speak up for the passing lanes if you would. The residents would sure appreciate it. And thank you for allowing me the time to speak, and I appreciate y'all's public service.
Thank you. Anyone else here for public expression?
One more.
My name's Jerry Cox, 1081 Kane Gap Road, Dunfield, Virginia, Stickleyville. And my brother gave you some information there on what they're doing in Patrick County on the section there, Lover's League. And if you look at that article, they call that a game changer for their county. And I think that could be the same save for Lee County if we can continue on the highway there in Stickleyville to help our residents, our emergency vehicles, ambulance services. It would be a great thing, and I'd encourage Mr. Jesse to attend that. And anyone else? So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I hope that's good information.
Any more there for public expression? If not, we'll move on to approval meetings for the March 21st, 2023, regular meeting.
Make a motion to approve.
Have a motion, do I hear a second? Motion and a second, any discussion? All favor signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Now, I get back to where I left off, approval of dispersals. Any comments, Mr. Poe?
No.
I'll entertain, entertain a motion, pay the bills.
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All favor signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, finance.
Mr. Chairman, I got called up in the moment, voted aye when I normally vote no. I'm sorry. I was making myself a note.
You want to recite it?
I want to recite that.
Next, finance and supplemental appropriations. Any questions on those? Sure paid this time. I'll entertain a motion to approve supplemental appropriations.
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All favor signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next thing is old business. The EBA budget disbursement request.
Chairman, last month, the EBA submitted a request for dispersing of the remaining $7,658.28 that was allocated in the FY 2022/23 budget. As a follow-up to this request, the board asked for additional information. They provided a listing of their operating expenses for the current fiscal year, which totaled $26,250.50 as shown on that attachment. They have a current cash balance of $169,493.52, primarily from the recent sale of some EBA property in Roseville.
Anyone have any questions on that? Mr. Johnson, please, come to the podium. When I was going through this, looking at miscellaneous expense, $15,000, that's more than half of what...
What that is, that was actually a fraudulent check that was written. I think it was actually out of Kansas. The bank of cash that was actually gone back through and recovered by, was what that was for. It was just coded as miscellaneous because it come through our system.
So you're going to spend $10,000 this year then, right?
No, if you, if you actually look at those expenditures, anything that is marked off on the side is not included in that $26,000 total.
Okay.
The only things that are included in that are our actual operating expenses. And I'll give you a brief synopsis here. It's the position of the authority that these funds were allocated to portion of this fiscal year as operating expenditures and should be dispersed, and that's why I said probably not.
What property did you sell?
It's in front of the Royal Building out next to that street.
So you got $169,000 out of that?
Actually, it was a little bit more than that.
And you're asking us for more money when you got that much money?
I'm not asking you for it. It is the position of the authority that the allocation should be dispersed.
Well, we didn't know where you allocated that, you were going to sell property for $70,000 plus. That's all I have.
Do you care to tell how it came about that the property got sold? And this is a reflection on you. I know you didn't have anything to do with it, but...
Yeah, so this property was actually subject to an option by Pete Busk that was entered into by the authority in 1983. The option was never exercised. I don't know how it got lost through the years, but the authority actually did not know that they still retain ownership of the property. Even when the highway came through and we got did the buyout, the money came to the authority at that time. So how this was not on the asset sheet for the authority, I can't speak to. But it's, it's been in the authority's possession for that long.
Anyone else have any questions? Thank you. I'll entertain a motion for the EBA budget disbursement request.
Can we have a little more discussion on it, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just want to remind the board that there was a time about a year and a half ago that we asked them to sign a note, I believe it was your man or us, our board asked them to sign a note, and they said no. And I think I made the comment then that they may come into some money at some point, and now they have, and now they have their hand out. And when we allocated that money, it was if they needed, we're going to allocate up to this amount for if they needed, not at the end of the year, you just take whatever's left. So I'm very much opposed to giving them the rest of that money.
I'll entertain a motion. To approve or disapprove?
I'll make a motion to disapprove the request.
I have a motion to disapprove the request. Do I hear a second?
I'll say it.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If none, all favor signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is county code recalcification, Mr. Poe.
We did not have an opportunity to meet with county attorney, and I did not have a chance to meet and talk about that. I anticipate, hopefully, we can get together within the next week or so, okay, if I get a clip of my head.
All right. Next is the fire alarms at the courthouse.
I have not, haven't even taken any action on that yet.
To that point, I've reached out to someone, the fire department, who's reached out to me about it, and I said, you know, I brought it up, you know, I haven't forgotten about it, it's on our agenda, and they said, well, it was a thing before you got on the boards. We waited this many years, might as well wait a little longer. So given their thoughts on it and the vibe, can we hurry get to...
I'll try to get to it. Since social services moved to their new building, they've probably not had an alarm here more than twice, and that's been 16, 17, 16 years. But it was, it was brought up the last time someone pulled an alarm, and I forget where it was pulled, but it was mentioned when they got here, I think they brought one of the small, small trucks down here just to see what was going on, because we didn't, we hadn't reported anything. They mentioned that they got some kind of code, and we don't have any diagrams on the old fire alarm system. We don't have any diagrams on the old fire alarm system that's in the building. I've never seen one.
We're just wanting to have somebody here to pull their...
Yes, well, that's what it's going to take. We have to have dispatch standing by, someone at the fire department standing by and here at the building. That's why I said it has to be done on a weekend when there's no one around. And we'll just have to walk through the building and trip alarms and see what code it reads to them. And then we can give them a schedule of where that is in the building.
Do we have a diagram drawn out? Can somebody draw one out of the building?
I can, I can draw that out. I can use one of our remodeling floor plans or something of that nature and show them where they're at in each station. But I just need to get a Saturday when I can do that.
Okay. Next on the agenda is property donations to the county.
I still need to make follow-up contact with the one that the board voted on last month at St. Charles up in the Monarch area. And I just, in the last day, provided Ms. Muncie with information on one of those other properties. There was only one that the board really indicated they wanted to look at. The heirs and things of that nature. I did provide her with some additional, with information on all four of the property owners in question. But I wasn't sure. I don't think there's much of a title issue on some of the others. But I did provide them with...
Well, and I'll speak up to that.
Oh, okay.
I know you couldn't say anything.
I did. I could.
Um, I was able to take a look at them today. I think there's one that we need to discuss a bit further. Maybe take it up in close session, just as property acquisition. The other three, I don't have the names in front of me. Maybe I do. We can't. If it's all right, we can just take them all up at that time since it's still on the property acquisition. If that's okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on. New business, board appointments?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like, what more? Quanto business not on there is the MBOs. Have you got any word from anybody on those?
Uh, no, I don't have any, anything additional of that.
I know Scott County, I've talked to them and they reached out to AT&T. But I haven't heard. I didn't know if they might have contacted you. I haven't too, I haven't.
I haven't seen a coverage map. Now, I know, I don't know who's working on what. But I know I talked to Matthew today, but he's out there. But I'll follow up with him. See where they're at.
We still haven't decided where the third one goes. And where did we decide that last time?
Well, we had them do a coverage map up there on that last location. I haven't gotten back with them.
We were asking for a coverage map in the north of St. Charles. And then we still haven't, we had potential for one in Stickleyville, potential of that.
All right. Going on, this is building code appointment.
I'd make a motion to table.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next is the planning commission. And I would recommend that Jeanie still be appointed to that board. And that is a motion, second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is Black Diamond Resource Conservation.
There's another one, no planning commission.
Oh.
I'd make a motion to rip one, Joyce Way.
I'm sorry. Second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, the Black Diamond Resource Conservation. That was held by Jeffrey Woodard. He doesn't want to do it anymore, I credit.
I don't know if he wants to or not, but the permanency is from somebody that's from the district too. So I had said that if you all want some like one of your districts, that would be fine. If you don't, I'll ask him if he wants to serve.
That's fine. So I guess we table that till you talk to him, right?
I'll make a motion to table that.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next is Social Services.
Did you all find out if...
She, no, she's not eligible for serving.
Okay. So she never did call me with her recommendation. Did she get ahold of you?
I mean, we just talked about it loosely, but not since I told you that night.
I'll make a motion to table that and I'll, I'll talk to somebody next month.
I have a motion to table. Do I hear a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? If none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, next is Economic Development Authority.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion to reappoint Mark Long back to that board.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next is Fair Housing Resolution and Designation of Fair Housing Administrator.
New package of resolution endorsing fair housing practices in Lee County. And the resolution would also endorse the county administrator to serve as a fair housing administrator. Uh, this resolution and designation is required in order for us to be in compliance with Department of Housing and Community Development guidelines for being recipients of community development block grants. This is particularly water, water project grants that we receive. Uh, also approve the resolution that be published in a local newspaper at least once.
Okay, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution Fair Housing Notice 023-Z003.
Second.
Did you make the motion or...?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you made the motion. I'll make that motion.
I have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next is Request to Install Cameras at Lee County Health Department.
We had a letter request from the Virginia Department of Health to install cameras in that building. Uh, they're required to obtain consent of the landlords, which is the county, prior to initiating the project. Uh, be no cost to the county to take that project out with funds of their own.
So we just need to approve it?
Just need, just need to give them approval to do it.
So...
Have a motion, second. And a second. Any discussion? I like that phrase. If none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is Request for Increase in HVAC Maintenance Contract.
Contract for maintenance and repair of HVAC system in various county buildings was awarded to Southwest Heating and Air Conditioning back in 2011. It's continued in effect since that time with basically no increase in any of the contract amounts. Uh, if you ever enclosed in your packet there a request from Southwest Heating for an increase in the monthly fee for maintenance, service call fees and labor costs. The original contract was $700 per month. Uh, they're requesting that be increased to $850 a monthly. And they're also requesting an increase in the service calls and the hourly rates. And then it's been 12 years since there's been any adjustment in that.
Thank you. I'd like a motion that we take it up under contracts in a closed session. And I notice there wasn't a contract attached. At least it wouldn't be my bag.
No. Okay, we'll take it up in closed session. Next is the E911, Department of Request for Additional Part-Time Funding.
You have a request for additional funding for part-time dispatchers. Additional cost is a result of vacancies through the year. Uh, they have to use part-time employees to fill those vacancies during that time. Also, if there's any turnover, if folks leave or anything, if there's, uh, someone is out on vacation, sick leave, anything of that nature. And also, when we hire new dispatchers, they basically, you still have other dispatchers, two others in there while we're training the new ones. I would recommend that an additional $5,000 be appropriated to cover this. Uh, currently, we budgeted $19,000 for this year. We're currently at $21,467, which is about $2,400 over budget. The $5,000 should easily cover that, I think. The sheriff has some, uh, part-time funds that are provided by the comp board. And he has agreed to pay for at least one part-time employee and dispatch for the remainder of the fiscal year from those funds. So that takes some strain off the county side. I don't think we'll need the full $5,000, but I just thought we'd toss it out there instead of having to come back again later. If it's not needed, it won't be spent.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? If none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is the Reassessment Contract Update.
As indicated in the memo provided in your packet, I was notified last week that the owner of Old Dominion Appraisal Company, who was contracted to do the reassessment for the county, recently suffered a fall down fly tire resulting in some injuries, which required some surgery. And due to these injuries, he stated that he will not be able to conduct the reassessment as planned. Uh, he's requesting that the contract be terminated and that the county release the performance bond that he provided in the amount of $78,175, which was provided in the form of cashier check and deposit with the treasurer's office. There's been no work done, no billing, no payments have been made under the contract. Uh, also, in reaction, in light of this event, I would request to re-advertise that project. It's not going to be moving it going.
I request that we take that up under contracts in closed session.
Second. Excuse me, I had a question for the contract. All we're doing is asking to re-advertise.
Well, they need to take action. Need to take action to terminate the contract and there is a request to release the bond.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is a Request for Sponsorship of MEOC Emergency Fuel Fund Walk-A-Down.
Uh, enclosed, enclosed in your, in the memo there, included in the memo, an email from Stephanie Sprinkle, the Chief Financial Officer of MEOC, regarding sponsorship of the annual Walk-A-Down fundraising event for their emergency fuel fund. They're requesting, uh, an amount equal to what we have provided in the past $5,000. So that would take place May 7th at Little Park in Big Some Gap.
Well, I, you know, I see where that... A hundred people in Lee County. Uh, over 100 additional people in Lee County compared to the same timeframe last year. And also a record year of expenses. I recommend that I make a motion that we approve this for the MEOC Emergency Fuel Fund.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Aye.
You opposed? Next on the agenda is Possible Tipping Fee Revenue.
This is food for thought. The tipping fee, county tipping fee for dropping business and non-household waste at the transfer station has been $37.50 per ton for several years. Uh, we've had increases in transportation fees over the past several years. Current pricing for disposal, uh, has increased due to having to move to a new location. So that $37.50 is no longer even close to covering the amount we actually pay out. Our total cost for loading, transporting and disposing of the waste is now $57.71 per ton. And I would recommend that the board consider an increase in that.
I'll entertain a motion to approve that increase.
In the past, when that's been done, have you done it all at once? Have you given any kind of a buffer for businesses so they can go up on their prices? Or do you generally just do it all at once?
Well, uh, what you could do is you go ahead and act to increase it, but have a delayed start date on it so that we can be advertised.
Do you have a suggestion on your delayed start date?
Uh, this is, I would not start it before June, if you're going until you can just make it effective July 1.
Would you go up the whole amount at one time?
Rather than doing several increases over a one-year period, yes, I would. Because that gets to be an issue as far as having to change billing rates. And it's almost more confusing than the issue of just going up on the dollar.
What would you recommend and take it to?
Well, like I said, it's costing $57.71 now to dispose of it. If you, if you go to $57.50, that almost covers it all, but not entirely.
And you'll just send out letters to your businesses that dump, or how do you do?
We, well, we would, uh, we could send out letters to anyone who has an account. But we could also have the notice posted at the transfer station for anyone that comes in and scales and put an ad in the paper as well.
I'd like to do the first of them. I don't see the need for the ad in the paper. But I think we ought to send out a letter to them and post it.
You want to make a motion to...
What do you all think, Russ?
Well, you know, it's costing us more than what we're getting to haul it away. I mean, I'd, I'd go with what Dan suggested here. Since we've had a 50% or 100% increase in air...
Uh, not quite. It's gone up $20.
But I mean, where we used to take it.
Oh, yeah. Well, we had a 50% increase on the tipping fees. And the transportation fees have increased over the years.
Yeah. I mean, you know, fuels up and it's costing us money. We can't afford all trash for free.
You all okay with this, Eddie? Is that going to increase the transfer stations? Is that going to impact the transfer stations anyway because these people buck against taking it up there, sneaking it in the transfer station for the convenience center?
Well, I mean, that, that can happen.
I mean, you, you might win on one side, but you're going to pay it either way.
Is dumpster junk and those kind of people the majority of what you get that pays?
No, no full volume, but we get theirs. And then, of course, we get business wasted and dampened. They're a commercial customer for us. They pick up their residential waste and their business waste on different days. And the residential waste is exempt because county residents are exempt. But their business waste is not, so it's their bill for tipping fee on that. We do have business accounts, contractors.
I kind of thought the same thing you thought, that it's just going to force people to throw it in the dumpster. But then I thought...
Or over the hill.
Yeah. But I kind of figured dumpster junk was the vast majority of it, but it may not be.
Well, this would, uh, this would also impact the prison. They haul theirs in. Contractors for many waste, different ones, and private individuals.
Contractors by the passing cost on to their customers.
Well, they have that option.
Yeah.
And again, it doesn't force anyone to illegally do it. That's illegal.
Yeah, it has been forever, but there is no stop to it. I'm okay with taking it to next month. I mean, I don't mind having some discussion, you know, have more discussion. But if you all are prepared with that, I mean, it's fine. I just think we need to take a little bit longer look at the impact it'll have throughout.
Okay. I said, let me talk about it more sometime.
Motion to table.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All in favor signify the same aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is renewal of waiver to provide the IOA with agreement or services.
There's a request in your packet from Southwest Virginia Workforce Development Board for renewal of the waiver, which would allow them to continue providing high-grade youth services for employment within the seven counties, one city region that they serve. They've provided these services since Lee County became the local grant recipient for their program funding. Details of the request, the background information, program design, past performances included with the material they've provided.
I hear a motion for the renewal of waiver for IOA services. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor signify the same aye. Any opposed? Next is workforce development one-stop operator agreement extension.
Southwest Virginia Workforce Development Board is requesting a one-year extension to their current agreement to provide workforce and training services in the local workforce development area, one territory, through their one-stop center. They petition the state for a one-year waiver on this, which would allow the county to delay issuing a request for proposal for these services for at least a one-year period. In anticipation of receiving that state waiver, they're requesting that the county go ahead and approve this as the grant recipient, which is that way, as soon as we hear from the state, we'd be able to just allow them to continue on for an additional one-year serving as the one-stop operator. We put this out in a request for proposal four years ago. We got one response, and that was from the workforce development board. I think there was only one. There might have been two responses. But the workforce development board was selected to provide this. They either administer the funding for a subcontractor to do the work, or they are allowed to do the work themselves and provide those services. So they petitioned to do those. The last time they submitted the proposal, they were accepted. This would just extend those services for one year if the extension agreement by the state. If you approved it tonight, and the state does not grant the extension, then I would have to put out a request for proposal immediately to try to have that in place by July 1.
I'll entertain a motion for the one-stop operator development agreement extension. Do I hear a motion?
I'd like the motion to approve the request.
Thank you. I have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor signify the same aye. And I won't recuse myself because I'm the chairman of the Cleveland Board also. Next is rabies clinic schedule.
The chairman provided the original schedule that they had requested due to... They did not get their request until two days after the last board meeting, and with no recess meeting scheduled, there was no time to take this up. It says it does require action by the board. The health department did notify that Wise County has gone the route of authorizing the county administrator to give that approval, but we have not done that yet. So I advise them of that. In the meantime, they said that, well, their first clinic was to have been this Saturday, and there's not time, since there was not going to be approval until tonight at the earliest. They're saying they can't, well, they're postponing until next week, starting that. But talked to them last week, latter part of the week, and suggested that they submit a newsletter requesting this and outline their new schedule, and also the possibility of picking up a third clinic maybe later in the summer. She advised that they really had other things going on for the next several months and couldn't do three in a row due to other conflicts. So I just suggested maybe they pick another clinic up later in the summer or early fall. So they submitted this. Cut down to just the clinic being held at Lehigh on Saturday, April 29th, and at Thomas Walker on Saturday, May 6th, with a possible third clinic later in the year, and also with some other information there that they provided. So I'll just give you a minute to read on that. Sorry, but I didn't get this until yesterday, so.
Dan, didn't we? I know we had this discussion last year about letting you make that decision. I thought we voted on it.
I know. There's nothing, nothing much to change coming to the board.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we give Mr. Poe the authority to approve these rabies clinics.
Second.
They changed that wording to the county administrator.
County administrator, I'm sorry.
Because the other would only last as long as I lasted.
Sorry about that. I'll change that to county administrator.
Second.
All in favor, any discussion about that? If none, all in favor signify the same aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll take a short break at this time. There's the county attorney.
I don't have anything additional to report. I just request closed session for that decision.
Your folks' recommendation to the county administrator.
Couple things. This first one is a request for the victim witness program to proclaim next week as National Victims Rights Week. There's a resolution attached to it. Or it's a proclamation.
I'll entertain a motion to commemorate National Victims Rights Week.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion, do I hear a second? I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor signify the same aye. Any opposed?
I'll just say because the request came from the board.
You have something else to make, Mr. Poe?
Yes. We have a termite issue over at the health department building. We've had some sightings in recent years. We've always had them treated. We have done a full building treatment. It's basically what I've been told is probably limited to a wooden cabinet. And the health department has just requested that we get rid of it entirely. But because of the presence of them in the building, I feel like it's probably a good idea to just have the building free. You've basically got a concrete slab, and you've got machinery walls, exterior walls that still they can get through cracks. And that building is about 52 years old now. And I'm sure it's developed some cracks, not only in the floor, but other areas that the termites couldn't gain access. I have two quotes. One is from Orkin. A whole build, they gave two different quotes. One, just to treat the rear wall. But in this case, I think we'd be better off to do a full building treatment. To treat the whole building, they priced it at $3,911. The annual warranty renewal, if you keep that, is $470 a year. That would start the year out from the treatment time. Also, we have, and I assume that's probably out of the Kingsport, Bristol area. I'm not sure where the closest Orkin office is at. That's just in an email. Also have a price from Lone Pine Exterminating Company, which works out of Wise County, works in Virginia, Kentucky, Tennessee. They gave a price, gave details on what they would do in drilling and injecting. But to do the entire building would be $5,088. And then their annual renewal to maintain the guarantee would be $420.
Now, did somebody make an inspection to?
We asked, they can't even look. I mean, they're both the internal, there are termites there in that one room especially. But they have to gain access through the building itself some way, shape, or fashion to get to that wood.
Well, I personally think we need to treat it rather than let the termite eat it.
Can you go to someone else?
Orkin was $3,911. And this is all we've got from Orkin. Just if we possibly get some further detail from them, because they just have no building treatment, no details. Lone Pine Exterminating provides information on the type of material, what pesticide they'll use, plus how they'll go about, what all they'll do, how they'll do their drilling, things of that. Theirs was $5,088. It's about $1,100 difference.
Dan, do you know who's done the school board stuff there? They've done vocational school.
They gave the school board as a reference.
Well, I know, but prior to them, because they had to be called in to redo it.
Okay. I don't know who was doing theirs before, but he says...
Somebody can't have done it.
As a referral on compatible structures, he recommended to contact the local county schools of the district. And he also recommended treatment be completed on a Saturday or any other time the health department is closed.
Who reached out to the people about this?
We made contact down the office.
Did anybody reach out to Ryan's here in Lee County?
He has spot treated for them in the past. When we've had swarms, he's been notified and has treated. They come back every year.
Has he been to this building?
Yes.
Has he been asked to treat the whole building?
Not to treat the entire building. He does the pest control treatment on the building. And we have asked him to do the treatment on the termites, but he's never recommended a full building treatment. He's just done the spot treatment and gone off.
I kind of think we ought to reach out to him. One, because it's local. Two, when you do real estate closings, that's one of the costs that comes out a lot of times in a real estate closing. So I sign a lot of checks for termite eradication. And I don't think I've ever signed one for $5,000 bucks. I mean, I know that's a good-sized bill, but that seems pretty extreme. You can do that stuff yourself. I'd be interested to know if Mr. Collins were thoughtful that the transfer station could. And they may need a chemical license to do that. I don't know. But I don't know about the effectiveness of it. I've done it before in rental houses.
You can do the flood trenches and things of that nature, but as far as injecting it back under the wall of the building, you have to drill holes and injection. I'd have to go through that process and pass.
Is that something, Dan, that you think you could reach out to superintendent and find out who had treated prior before they had to call in? Because I know they had to call in Lone Pine to come in and redo it.
I can do that.
I'd like to know all that before we, you know, before we jumped on the ride.
You got Brian coming in from Mr. Poe?
Yeah.
Call him when we go into public session. That's it, basically, public session, anyway. Anything else?
The only thing I have is under closed session personnel.
Okay. Your folks' recommendations of the board. Mr. Smith?
I have none.
Mr. Cobb?
At the airport, we've lost $260,000 of funding. We're losing $150,000 per year, and 110, 150 of, what's it called? FAA entitlement funds that we're losing per year, and 110 of the ARCA funds.
BIA, oh, yeah.
And the reason we're losing that is because we don't have 10 fixed, what do you call it, Dan? Fixed base plane?
10 base aircraft.
There's been a lot of discussion with the airport board about kicking people out of the hangars that don't have planes there permanently, that just live out of town. They come in here, they've got a hangar. I'd like to recommend that we give the airport authority, the authority to send out a letter. It's taken with their air hangars. We collect the rent, we get the money. But I'd like for them to tactfully send out a letter just advising those. I think there's four people that fall into that category of they're out of town, but they're taking up a hangar. We're not getting to count their planes. I think I'm telling you right. Whatever the number is, I'd like for them to be able to send a letter out just advising the people of the situation and asking if we've got any volunteers to move out. Otherwise, I think we'd probably need to find a way to kick some people out so we can get some planes there, so we get our $260,000 a year back. So the planes has got to be there 180 days a year, or 182, or something like that. We've got eight.
We have seven. We have seven currently.
And probably one of those shouldn't be counted. I think you're right.
Depends on how literally you take the FAA guidelines. If they're error-worthy, that means they have to have been annual. And there's at least two down there that have not been annual in quite some ways. But we still submit them to the state as base aircraft because they are on the field, and they do take up a hangar, and they do have a tailwind, and they're vetted.
You all okay with that?
I'll make that motion that we give them the authority to send out a letter to the people occupying the hangars, ask them for volunteers.
I'll second that. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If none, all in favor signify the same aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
I noticed a tin on my egg shop was blown up one day recently. I drove by. Can we, Dan, have somebody address that?
Yeah, they're working anyway. I'll put that on their list.
Is there a housing study artifact that BLT just came back? Dwayne Miller was telling me something about a housing study artifact?
Yeah. Depend that to Richard.
There it is. And that's actually been done about one week ago.
So we don't have to approve anything?
Do you want it this time? No.
Okay. We talked a while back about an ordinance for houses that need to be cleaned up. And I think the conclusion was that we didn't have an ordinance that would allow us to clean something up and put a lien on the property. I guess my suggestion is that we have Mr. Poe and Ms. Bunsey work on gradually an ordinance that allows us to basically do what Town Pennington does.
We have an ordinance on derelict structures.
I'm talking about litter cleanup.
Okay, you're talking about overgrown properties?
Not overgrown, but a ton of beer cans out in the yard, just trashed up yards, things that happened before that goes after. But I think what we discussed last time or time before was that you can't, you can't force a cleanup on it and then... force a cleanup on it and then tack it on as a lien on the property. Whereas I think we can do that with derelict structures.
Yeah, on derelict structures, we can attach as a lien on the property. And I've seen ordinances on overgrown, you know, high grass, overgrown, things of that nature, having specifically looked in code for something for the litter, because litter is addressed in other ways. So I don't... The county attorney need to research that to see if there's even statutory authority for that.
The problem is, some of these people are getting rid of, they go to court, they get a fine, they don't pay the fine, they don't clean the stuff up. So what can you do with those people?
Didn't we talk last time about just recording those judgments against those if they've not been?
We did talk about that, but if you don't force a sale on the property, then they're still sitting there occupying the property.
I mean, I agree, but if it starts... I mean, I don't know. You may run on where... Run up on somewhere they do, you know, they do try to... I mean, I guess what I'm saying is, in the meantime, maybe getting Alan into the habit of going ahead and doing that wouldn't be a bad thing.
I think we definitely need to do that. But can you research it? We can't handle it anymore. Just as a FYI to the public, a lot of people talk about taxes, and the taxes are too high. What are you spending this money on? Mr. Poe and I, sheriff on the jail authority, we got a proposed budget, I guess, two weeks ago. Lee County's portion of the jail bill this year is going up by $567,000 from what it was last year, bringing it up to, what is it, Dana, 2.6 million now?
Don't have that number in front of me.
I think it was close to 2.6 million. I think that's what it was.
With Z service, it probably is, yeah.
But whatever the case, I just want people to understand, one of the things... There's a lot of things we can't control, and the jail cost are one of them. And they're going up because they can't keep people over there. They're competing with the state prison, who's paying people through the nose now, and they're losing guards left and right, so they keep having to go up on what guards get paid, and that costs us money. I had a complaint from in the building that the bathroom next to the circuit court clerk's office, female, women's bathroom, won't flush, had to flush it about four times. When you do flush it, it's used everywhere.
It's been looked at by the maintenance firm, and they've ordered parts for that.
And they said they don't have any hot water and haven't had for a while.
They have ordered parts for that as well. They checked all that about two weeks ago.
Okay. They brought it up to me last week, I think.
It was checked two weeks ago.
Last thing, hay at the landfill. Last year, we voted to allow someone to cut the hay at the landfill. I'd like to see that happen this year. I think when we brought it up last time, they just started bush hogging. How did we say we were going to go about that?
I don't recall if there was a decision made for people on that.
I want to say that we were going to allow you to try to find somebody, or that we were going to put... Maybe we were going to put something in the paper and ask anybody wanting to cut it, or somehow we were going to do that.
You want people to put in a bid to get it, or...
I mean, they could, but somebody might not pay for it.
Yeah, I'd say we...
Do we advertise it on Facebook?
Got any takers back there?
Well, I don't know how popular radioactive hay is.
Wasn't it cut before?
Several years ago, many years ago, they allowed them to mow some, yeah.
I come to work in '09, and it must have been the year before then.
It's prior to that.
It was a scraggler, a few round bales of hay there, and his hay fork. He put the hay fork in the metal pile and sold it.
And they did that partially over on the old part, back behind where the shop is now. And that was before, and that had been regraded, and that was rough back up in there.
I make a motion that we advertise for that ASAP, because then we hay cut more than a few weeks.
I'll second that motion. Any discussion? If none, all in favor signify the same as. Motion carries. Mr. Jesse? Do you have any reports and recommendations to the board?
None, sir.
Mr. Leonard?
No.
I've got a couple here. First thing is, I think we need to vote on this webpage thing tonight. And I'll make a motion to give contract to USA Customs Solutions. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify the same as. Any opposed?
I'll just say because they were in space.
And the next thing is cameras at the transfer station.
We will be working on that. We have to get into that service first.
I've been into it with the same guy who wear class. He's got a throwing panel and got a hook on the end of it, that he's reaching over in there and getting that trash out. I ran him off two times. He just keeps coming back.
I'll talk to the report agent as well.
He's usually there, son.
1,500 Chevrolet pickup truck.
Red?
Yeah. I called him in once this week.
And then this guy in the gray SUV that I ran off twice, he's over there going through the dirt, and I ran him off. So he goes over there to where the, you know, they throw the wood and all that stuff in, start pulling stuff out there. Here comes a guy in with the red Chevrolet truck pulling the trailer. So it's got stopped.
Okay. We'll try to accelerate that.
Can't keep the cameras up? Do we have any part-time workers?
We have a guy that takes care of pogoing that site at night.
We need somebody there all day.
Okay.
If... I don't know how long to get those cameras up.
We don't have enough part-timers to cover that site all day.
At one time, we had a works program participant. That man that... You talking about the one young at the transfer station?
Yes. I'll check and see if they got any more, if we can use them up there. Try to come up with something.
Well, we used to get those...
That program that...
Yeah, I know. That could have been a long time ago, but we had people that could fill those vacancies. And next thing is that we need to change the name of the transfer station to the Public Works, and whatever you had written in there named it. What was your suggestion? We change it too?
Well, I'll have that memo with me tonight, but I think what I'd say was if you change it to the Public Works Department, then solid waste would be a division of that, basically. Whether or not, of course, there was one, there was a proposal from the superintendent one time to split the workers into two different groups, one for solid waste and one for public works in general. But they basically do not all... There's some of them that only do solid waste work, but there's some then that do combination of public works and...
Yeah, I would say.
It would change the department name to Solid, to Public Works, which would be the umbrella over solid waste.
I'll make a motion that we make that name change.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor signify the same as. Motion carries. That's all I have. Close session, Mr. Cobb.
I make a motion. We go into closed session, percentage 2.2-37-11. Sub A1 personnel, three acquisition or disposition of real properties, and 29 contracts, and six investment in public funds.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor signify the same as. We are now in closed session.